Call for a motion, have we approved tonight's agenda as it is printed?
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we're getting some, are these reappointments? I know probably Ken Larson is. Oh, they, oh, okay. Item number one, commission application and appointment for Carla Moberg for Park Commission. Call for a motion that we approve Carla for the Park Commission.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion?
Just like to thank her for her service on the Park Commission.
Tell you what, everybody you know who's been re-upping, it's nice to see that because it's tough to get somebody on these boards.
Yes, it is.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Commission board application from Ken Larson for the Joint Cable Television Access Board. No one has any questions, call for a motion that we appoint Ken Larson? We appoint Ken?
So moved.
Motion made by Koivinen, we got a support.
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? I think, you know, we start doing these individuals who re-up, I think maybe send them a letter of thanks for, to.
I think that would be appropriate, Mayor.
You know, I mean, because that, it's a big deal, people don't think it is, but it is a big deal.
Absolutely.
And after they serve a term, they want to do it again, so we got to keep them happy. Well, you know, they got the experience and everything now.
Yep.
To being on that.
I'm more in favor of an honest lunch.
So.
With doughnuts.
With Sarmas.
With Sarmas, yes.
Well, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, approval of payroll, January 16th through the 31st, and request for firefighters to attend the FDIC International Indianapolis, Indiana Fire School, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota. Don't we send them to those schools, John?
Every, every, every year or so, and it's budgeted, is it not?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Because I thought, I thought we were sending. I hope you have enough interest to go.
We want training and stuff.
I like, I like training.
Yes.
You know, I'm a real proponent of training.
I'm sure you'll have a full participation.
Oh, good.
Are they going to, are they going to mix them up, John, you know, and not send all the same six to Indianapolis?
No, it'll probably to be two different groups, but don't quote me on that. But that would be the prudent way of doing it.
That'd be nice to give everybody a chance.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, read the, the agenda for this international council, it sounds like it's well worth going.
It's top notch.
Yeah.
It's top notch.
You know, I mean, when you send up these different areas, you get exposure to different people, different situations, a lot of experience. That's where you really get the benefit. You know, it costs a little bit for transportation, travel, but it comes back big time.
And you got to hand it to all the volunteers and that are there, and if they're willing to participate then in our program, in our fire and first aid.
It shows a lot of initiative to want to learn more, rather than just be like a bump on the log and sit there.
Right, so we can encourage more of this and maybe we'll get some other firefighters to join up too.
Yeah, numbers, numbers are a problem.
Yep.
All over the range, so.
It is. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Koivinen, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings at this time, no unfinished business. And we'll jump into new business. Item one, Minnesota lawful gambling premises permit application for Evolith Elk, Evolith Elk's Lodge at Boomtown.
My understanding, they want to add another, other, other than the one that they have up at the club, they want another one there?
Well, that was my question, are they moving theirs out of there?
They're expanding their take case some more, they're taking as many sites as he can get.
Oh, okay.
Which is very nice for the Elks because it's, they donate a lot locally.
Yep, nicer Boomtown.
And now that they kind of know what they're doing, they have the electronics, they have the everything, so. They are extremely generous. Yes.
That was my question, are they moving out of the Elks and down there?
I think both places then.
If I'm not mistaken, they have the Red Garter, and I think they have Johnny D's. Um, so, yeah, they're, they're like flying out of the cities, that has a whole bunch, that's what they're, they're getting to be in.
That's a good spot to be, you get that traffic.
And they do a good job, so I think it's, and it's local.
No one has any more questions or discussion, call for a motion that we approve this permit application.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koivinen, any further discuss? This is, handout Jerry, that's in addition to what's on item three here.
Yeah, just a little memo of, of why we're going to be looking for a loan. Um, if we're interested in, in pursuing that in 2023, and that's, um, had numerous breaks on a sanitary horse man in the West Side over the years, so if we're looking to do that in 2023 or 2024, we have to start by getting on a project priority list and running it through the MPC and Public Facilities Authority. And once we get on that list, then we're eligible for low interest loans, which we've taken many of those other projects. But to get started, you have to be on it, doesn't mean you have to go after that project.
But it takes a while to get.
It takes a while to get on it and get scored high enough to, to get something taken care of, so you're eligible for low interest loans.
Anybody else have any questions, Jerry? If not, I'll call for a motion to authorize staff to submit requests to get on this priority list.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item four, proposal from Northeast Technical Services to review Ely Lake for zebra mussels. Jerry, does that, that goes in conjunction with the opening up the connecting pipe between the two lakes?
Yeah, um, Ely Lake, they know that there's zebra mussels in Ely Lake. Um, and we have our aqueduct, and we all know that the water's been extremely low this year. So in the winter, we'd like to open an aqueduct if our, if our levels are okay to do that. But to get the okay to do that, we have to do a bunch of testing, even though they know that the zebra mussels are inactive, not there in the winter.
Yeah.
They still have to do extensive testing. Um, but now I have something else in the works, so I may not have to spend that money to get tested, we may do it a different way. So, but I'd still like it approved that if you would, in case we have to use this service to, to be able to open an aqueduct, and it's, it seems like a lot of money, but St. Mary's Lake is low as it is right now, and Ely Lake has sufficient water in it right now, it's actually overflowing over the dam. So we'd like to get those levels at least up a little bit before spring. Because if we don't get a lot of rain in the spring, we're going to be in another drought right away. So we'd like to open them up in the winter, and this money may not be, might not have to do this testing right now, but if we end up having to, you know.
Yeah.
So you would just like it okay, just in case we have to?
They'll say.
Yeah.
Just, just in case, yeah, because this, this is the way we were going to have to go, and after talking with the DNR today again, they mentioned there's some other avenues we could possibly go because of the different costs, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the proposal from Northeast Technical Services? I think it's something we have to do, so we know what's going on there.
Yeah, it sounds like he might have another way to go, and if we have to spend it, we spend it, if we don't, it's a good thing.
Part of doing business. No one else has any questions or discussion, call for a motion that we approve this proposal from Northeast Technical Services?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number five, resolution accepting canine donation from Bonnie McDowell, and this isn't the first time Bonnie's given to the dog, is it?
Correct, and we, she's, I've donated every year since we had.
I was just going to say.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Seeing her name on your lots and.
Appreciate their support, continue to support.
Oh, yes.
You know, I was, I was really surprised, the, the support that came out for the dog.
And he's been.
From all over.
And he's been an asset.
Yep.
She could come to the lunch too. Oh, the Sarma lunch? Yeah, to honor these people for their service and for their donation, that would be great.
Well, call Jesse Hall. You know, I got my own, my own thoughts on this, you know, when that law was put into effect, that was, what I see, protect people who don't have insurance, to get them not to be a fat payday, I would just assume, pay the insurance premium, and I would end all the litigation, wouldn't that Mitch?
Right, if you correct, if the city just decided you wanted to pay the premium for the extent of his eligibility, you wouldn't have to contest it through the administrative hearing process, that would just, that process would just be disbanded or dismissed. So we've got a pending appeal before the Office of Administrative Hearings challenging that. The city's, really it would be the city's prerogative to withdraw that if that's what the council chooses to do.
Because that way you'd know they're getting the health insurance. You know what I mean, it's not, uh.
You should not want to lump some of the money.
It, it's not a money-making thing, I don't think that was the intent of the, the law, I can, I can see, understand what's going on, but that, that's my thoughts on that.
I guess, my view, Mayor, um, you know, I've been this great deal of consideration and did a little homework, and, um, I believe that, sincerely believe that it would be in the best interest of the city of Evolith to proceed with the settlement at this point in time, rather than risk a potential outcome of 20 years of payments to this individual. Secondly, you know, I know that we, a few months ago, had met and we had asked our city attorney and city administrator to, uh, go to this mediation session and gave them the authority to, to reach a tentative agreement with regard to this matter with caveat that we would have to come back to the council for full approval. Uh, they have done what we asked them to, and they have returned with a recommendation, and as I understand it, it's a recommendation of the city attorney, as well as the city administrator and the police chief to accept this agreement and be done with the matter. You know, I know it's a bitter pill, I know that none of us want to swallow it, we're in a position that, you know, but, um, not of our own doing, it's not of our own choosing, but, you know, I think, um, I think that it's against the city to settle this now for a specified amount, then to, to linger for 20, potentially 20 years with an annual expenditure. Another thing I weighed against though is the fact that this particular employee had, um, had they reached their full retirement age or retired from service at their retirement age, they would have been entitled to five years paid medical at city's expense in any event, so that would, that would be about the hundred and, hundred plus thousand dollars, so. That would be my thinking on the matter, Mayor.
Well, my thoughts, that about, much as our levy, that we levy this year, pretty, pretty close to that.
Right.
And I was willing to roll the dice that we might not have to go that long.
If we decide to accept this, and from what I read, Mitch, maybe you can tell me that, but he no longer has a claim, if he accepts this, he no, no longer has a claim against the city or anything?
That's correct, except workers' comp, because there is a pending workers' comp claim, but that's, that's dealt with through your workers' comp coverage through the legal Minnesota City's Insurance Trust, so that's the only exception. Everything else would be extinguished.
And my question, and my question was that if we roll the dice and in six months, something happens, do we have to pay for 20 years?
Yeah, you have to pay for family coverage until he would have reached age 65.
So it doesn't matter?
So it doesn't matter, right. So you have to continue to cover, no matter what, you have to continue his family coverage for his dependents because that's the coverage he had at the time of the qualifying event.
So we would have to pay five years of, of family insurance out of the tune of what, about $1,800 a month anyway?
You'd have to pay until he would have reached the age of 65.
Premiums are like 200.
600, so the cost of insurance per year is 37,000?
So when you look at that, let's say six years, that's 180,000 that we would have to pay, no matter what happens here, right?
Well, you, you actually potentially could pay more than that.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm getting at, I'm just using five years from right now till, okay?
Sure.
Because I'm on the line on this, because I don't want him to get anything, that's just my opinion, and I have a right to my opinion.
Right.
But, uh, for the, for the city itself, for five years, it would cost 180,000 dollars versus if we signed this, it's 100,000 and we're done with them.
120. 120.
120, so.
And then it's done.
See, that's where I'm at the spot, and I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, because I, I just don't like it. And like I said, that's my opinion, nobody else is up here. But to buy them out, which I don't want to give anybody money because we've had to do that before, which I just think is a bunch of bullshit, but again, that's my opinion. But it's going to be cheaper if we cash them out is what I'm hearing here.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I look at it, uh, maybe he wants to come back to the bargaining table realistically, if we're going to take that route. Because I'm sure you're not going to have a legal representation on a contingency firm when he's getting insurance premium a month. That's my thoughts.
Counselor, is there a conciliatory, as we used to say? Is there a chance of renegotiating that figure, you think? I know that you guys are in a good faith and everything and all of that, I don't want to put anybody in a hard spot, you had carte blanche to work out a deal, and this is what you came back with. But is there a possibility that he might come back to the table for a, a more? This pill will take a lot of hot soapy water and a broom handle for me to swallow. It's, it's a lot of money.
Me too.
It's a lot of money.
Well, I mean, the purpose of the mediation was to do exactly that, is to do the hard work of the negotiations, I mean, we did many hours worth of it, we had a very highly qualified mediator who went, so that's the purpose of doing a facilitated mediation, is to have those facilitated discussions and, and then to negotiate a deal in good faith, and then bring it back with a recommendation for approval. Is there a chance, or is there a, a chance that something else could be negotiated? Well, sure, there's always, there's some chance that that could be done, but, but at the same time, we showed up, the parties reached tentative deal, and and our job as the committee was to bring it back with a recommendation to the council. Uh, so my assessment would be, I think it would be unlikely that there would be another negotiated deal, but, but it's always possible.
Yep.
So if you turn this down, uh, could there be, could there be settlement negotiations resurrected in the future? There's always that possibility, but, I mean, this is, you know, we spent a lot of time, money and resources, energy and information that went back and forth to come up with this deal based upon, uh, you know, many, many variables that were analyzed as part of the mediation process that came up with this number, and so that's, that's why it's before you.
Because obviously insurance isn't an issue with him now, because he's getting it somewhere. To me, you'd think it's just using, using the law for something wasn't intended, there's a friggin' cash call for for a slush plug, but, because I don't, I don't think you're ever going to be done with this guy, I thought we were done the last time. But that's, that's my thoughts on it, I would just assume.
Just to reiterate.
Roll the dice and see what happens.
You pay him off, we're done with him completely, except the name only with the workman's comp thing that's going on.
That's correct.
And that's covered by our legal Minnesota Insurance Trust.
Right, yep.
I'd like to be done with that. And you guys did a wonderful job, did everything that you're asked to do and above.
Yes, they did.
No, no, and it, that was our job as administrative staff to do that, but in the end, ultimately, it is your decision.
And, yeah, I know, but it's, it's still, this is a, for me, and I, you know, I've heard everybody else, this is a hard pill to swallow. And I have my own reasons.
Me too, we levied for nothing.
You know, and.
What we did this year.
I don't know.
Our 6% levy was for absolutely nothing, just so somebody can get a whatever they want with a pile of money, I think you should work a little harder for it, myself. Because if you can save the city 30, 40 grand, that's 30, 40 grand we can spend somewhere else. Because I, I don't think you'll ever be done with the, this situation, but that's.
Well, if we don't approve it, we'll have them on the books for 20 years.
That's.
Roughly.
In theory, yes.
In theory, yes. So if we don't approve this and six months go down the line and we re-approach them, or a year goes down the line, we re-approach them? To see if, to see if this is tough all the way around, you know, I mean, there's just parts of me that do not want to give them anything.
No, because I thought we were done the first time.
That's what I thought.
No, it's something else, and I don't know what else is left out there.
Well, it won't be, it won't be done at all when, and I understand the workman's comp thing, but you, you guys are, we are paying into the workman's comp part. So, I mean, it's never going to be done at this rate.
I mean, we, we cash it, give him a hunk, 120,000 dollars, and he's still got this workman's comp claim going. You know, I'm sorry, but life isn't fair, but I think everybody here has worked for what they got. You know, I mean, that's why we're having a big, a hard time swallowing this, because the way everything came out, or came up.
Well, like I say, you know, you're, you're trying to watch how you tax and budget, and what we levied for, gone, you know, levied for nothing. Did we table this for a while? It'll maybe bring it up at the next meeting?
I wouldn't recommend tabling it, I think we, we're at a point where, you know, I mean, the administrative law judge is only going to have so much patience too, I mean, basically, the administrative proceedings are on hold while we go through this process of whether there's going to be a mediated settlement, and I, I don't think we can just put it off, I think the administrative law judge is going to want to reconvene the litigation process. So I, I would, I would just say you take an up or down vote on it tonight, I wouldn't recommend you table it.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about table it for six months, I was talking maybe two weeks, so everybody can, till our next meeting, so everybody can.
Well, you want to make a motion to table it? We can do that, you got a support?
I'll make a motion to table it till we nickel it over and think about it, you know, I'm, I go either way, but I'm going to have a hard time swallowing this pill. You know, and like I said, you guys did your job, you called us up when you had to settle, and you did everything right, it's just that I'm still having a hard time with this. You know? I'm one of five guys, for five votes, so.
You have a support to table it?
I would support that motion with, on contingent stat. At our next meeting, we make the decision. Yes, that's what I, at our next meeting, we make the decision, everybody's got time to think about it, and, I mean, now, like I says, I sit in a truck and I think about this, and I'm going to pros and the cons, and the pros are boom, it's done, but like Jim says, is it done? You know? When does it stop? And this is taxpayer dollars.
Yep.
You know, if I have a hard time spending 100,000 dollars, there's a lot of work for the city of Evolith.
Who cares if it does?
I think, yeah. Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Would that be all right, Mitch?
I mean, you know, I, yeah, I mean, I, I can't predict exactly what would happen, it might, it could, it could scuttle the deal, but.
Well, see, when I was at home.
I don't think so, but I, you know.
When I'm at home reading this on my desk, it's totally different than when I come here. You know, and I listen to everybody's reasoning, and I was on the fence either way to begin with, you know? It's just one of them, it's, it's not a good decision either way we go. You know, do we go with your heart or do you go with your head? You know, I mean, I think I would just like another little time to think about it, because I'm right in the middle right now.
Are you making that a second, John?
I will second.
Motion made by Koivinen, support by Rousey, to table this till the next council meeting? Any further discussion? All in favor, if you do a roll call vote?
Sure. Counselor Rousey?
Yes.
Counselor Koivinen?
Yes.
Counselor Purpich?
Yes.
Counselor Lilis?
No.
Mayor Vaisolevich?
Yes. Okay, item number seven, approval of discretionary expenditures for 2022. Well, this is Jerry, other than some unexpected.
It's never.
Yes, but this is not only, this is not only my, this is not only my request, this is, uh, chiefs and, uh, Jackies.
I see at least an hour of discussion on each one of these items.
And do not take the chief and Jackie down with you, this is you.
Maybe something that crops up, or other things that you go, hey, let's do this, so.
Yeah.
This is it for now.
Well, we got to keep moving forward, that's the whole thing here. Anybody else have any questions on these? I know we had a workshop on these, and, and you know, we have the unexpected things in this old town that pop up during the year.
I look at the police miscellaneous, it's a lot cheaper than the rest of the. Well, I think you did a good job, chief. Again, that's just my opinion.
Define miscellaneous here, chief.
You know, I, I look at this, and you brought us the, replace the boilers, and I think this council wants to keep that going and open, and them have to be replaced. The trees? Well, I'm not going to be alive when they grow up anyway.
I'm a big fan of trees, I like, I like trees.
But, you know, the sidewalks, that's with the St. Louis County, that's something we've been doing for the last four or five years now, and it's such a great partnership, and we get a lot of stuff done.
I'll tell you what, it is, they have been really good working with us on a lot of projects.
You know, the skid steer?
Yeah.
You got to have this stuff, I mean, we're running a business here, so.
Run that path along the Phil Pond, that's a pretty heavily used area there. Anybody have any questions on any of this? If not, call for a motion that we approve the discretionary expenditures.
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
All support.
Oh, that hurts.
Some whoa.
Support by Purpich. I was pulled right out of them.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Board and liaison updates. Johnny, what do you got?
Let me think. Did we have a HR meeting, was that the, no, it was canceled.
No, it's canceled.
Canceled this, this month due to our lack of agenda. And, uh, we discussed, we discussed the EDA meeting that we had. And uh, we discussed, we discussed the EDA meeting that we had.
We have not, yeah.
I believe that we have, uh, the batter project is moving forward. And anybody jumping, correct me, if I'm not right, I'm wrong sometimes more than I'm right. Uh, also that there's another project of certain areas in town that could use some beautification. Is that the correct word? I believe mostly flower work and stuff like that, and, and that's being worked on, and we have to. Be in conjunction with the people that own those properties, who one is us, and then there's another individual that's involved or businesses, so. That's going on. I think they're in fine financial shape from what I understand. Uh, there's a couple of things going on at the, at the Lincoln Place, nothing that can't be, uh, worked out and fixed. I think there's a, maybe some communications. Problems that, that might be worked out there, and things will, will move along there also, and everybody will be happy in the end, I hope. But, uh, other than that, uh, I think that's about it.
Joe, what have you got?
Well, I really don't have much, but, there's always a but. Um, they are having the, oh God, must be the thirty. Second or thirty-third annual Ron Maronic Memorial Pool Tournament this week in the downtown Evlith. So you will have a hundred of some of the finest shooters in the state of Minnesota here. Um, there'll be food at each location, so they'll start practicing on Friday night. They'll have like a nine ball and eight ball tournament. Warmups, and then it starts at, uh, nine or ten on Saturday morning. And like I says, if you're into pool and you wanna see some good pool shooters, these guys, uh, I'll say thirty to forty of them are semi-pros. I mean, these guys are masters, and they're just fun watching some of them. And they're, got to know them all. We started this tournament, I wanna say thirty-two years ago. And we started it with forty-eight people. I told Ron Maronic we want a big tournament, so we went to forty-eight. And then the highest we got one year was a hundred and sixty-eight. So now we've lost a few bars on the main street, so we can only handle so many, so now they're cutting it off at a hundred, and. It'll be, the streets will be, a lot of people.
Is that a two-day event, Joe?
Yes, it'll go Saturday, Sunday.
That is an economic boon.
Tell you what, it's really busy.
Yeah, a lot of peo-, a lot of people coming from Canada.
And they all bring wallets.
North Dakota.
Are you gonna get any, chief with patrolling the streets from your buddies?
And actually, they're very, the chief is very good about this, and like our last chief was, cause we tell these guys, they, most of them are staying up at, uh. At Super Eight and/or at, uh, the Cokes Motel, and we tell them, if you've had too much to drink, get a ride back to the room. And, and these guys don't really nail their vehicles, you know, cause we'd rather have them go home with a good time than a ticket. So, yeah, it's, it's good for the town, and there'll be people everywhere. That's all I got. I've taken enough time.
Jim?
Well, I was just gonna ask, you know, are we gonna expect more snow? Are we gonna have any cleanup problems, do you think?
I know, we've been, we've been trying to catch up, widening out the streets. We've done a few alleys that were really narrow. And so we'll start back on streets, but I think we're only supposed to get an inch or two here in the next, this week, so shouldn't be bad.
Well, we had the, uh. Rec board meeting.
Oh.
Uh, I'd like to tell you it went really smooth. But we spent, we spent two hours before they even got to their agenda. They let us go first, and by us, I mean, uh, representatives from Fail and, um, Gilbert were there. Uh, the two school activities directors were there. And, uh, as it was explained to me, they weren't there to take over anything. But because of the numbers in the basketball program here, and. In Evlith and in Virginia, the best thing to do was to pool them. So this spring, when they have their tournament starting here pretty quick, I guess. Uh, the teams will be fairly even, all being evened out and stuff. And it doesn't sound like these baseball or hockey parents really mind. Transferring their kids from one, one ring to the other. I guess, uh. I, I was. I know how busy families can be, and, you know, but our main concern was the kids. What about all the other programs that we have? Uh, when I left the meeting, I left it up, we left it up to the board, the commissioners or. The representatives from the different entities left it, that they should pick another director in the interim. Post it either online or in the paper for a certain amount of time until.
I think so, yeah.
Cause when Craig, when Craig Comilla leaves, he's the current director, and when he leaves, there wouldn't be anybody there, and I encouraged them to stay together as a board. Until we have our three hundred and sixty-five days, and we have the meeting with, uh, Superintendent Schmidt and the activities directors, and we can find out what direction we're gonna go. So, it, it, a lot of good discussion. Um, a lot of red faces, you know, in, in some areas. But in, as I understand it, the hockey season went fairly decent. Uh, they got a jump on the baseball by combining, and that was a numbers game also. Uh, I was against it being called Rock Ridge, and so was Fail, and so was Gilbert. They called it the Rock Ridge Baseball Association, and I said, that's not gonna fly. I says, as long as the cities and these entities are contributing to having the ball fields and everything ready, and that kinda stuff, that. We should maybe think about changing that, but other than that, they're ready to go. They, they've got some really vested people. Taking care of that baseball program. We do not have a softball program as of yet. Um, Boyd Carlblow has expressed interest that he would take charge of the softball association as a such, and get it started. Which, he's a fantastic, uh, coach and administrator in the girls softball area. Uh, have no, right now, there are no plans for a tennis, uh. Program in the summer like we've had in the past. Um, we kinda dropped the ball, I guess, when the rec depart, rec board dropped the ball by not getting Craig's replacement in place, but he's willing to. You know, he's gonna be leaving at the end of March, so we gotta get things going, and Jamie Linseth on, uh, he's on the board, and he's going with the baseball program, so he'll be watching it over for us. Um. It, it, it looks like there's gonna be, this community ed program is gonna oversee it, but. We're gonna have some representation there in, in the eventuality, but for right now, we, the board needed to replace, have Craig replaced. And as an, in an interim basis, and that's what I re, the people in the audience are the representatives from each. Um, entity told them to do that, so. I don't know what became of that, and do you see any minutes yet, uh?
I haven't seen any.
Yeah, so, but I'm assuming that they're gonna post it. Uh, at some point, I don't know what website it's gonna go on, or if it's gonna be in a newspaper, but, uh.
Well, you guys got off to a good start, having a good meeting. You know, just like was brought up earlier, it's the communication part. Cause not everybody works at the same speed to hunt things. Somebody who's more familiar with the process, how you do it, they're more apt to move a lot faster than others who aren't, but it's just everybody getting together and talk, and.
And one of the.
I think it'll work its way out.
One of the biggest problems that, uh, the board was looking at is the hip. I mean, we should have someone at the hip as. In constant, uh, contact with either the school and/or the hockey programs that are involved. There should be somebody there to have our interests. Our, have our sched, and go get the scheduling done and be part of it, so right now.
You think we have to create a new position, Jerry, down there that can be filled internally? With, uh, those different duties, more like administrative type of thing?
I mean, that's definitely a possibility. I, there, like Counselor Purpich said, uh, we will need somebody down there to do the scheduling.
Cause they'll be calling you, you know that. You were Mark.
There'll have to be, you know, somebody there to do scheduling, especially for hockey.
So I'm wondering, you know, maybe you gotta just make, change the job description with that, and adjust the pay to cover, you know, something like that.
Well, we.
And we know the board hires. Hires the person, so, I, you know, if Fail and Gilbert are still involved in this, that would be the board to, you know, recommend a position, you know, we'd have to come up, maybe. Work with them to, to get a position to fill, whether it's how many hours, part-time, full-time, probably won't be full-time, cause there's not gonna be a, a lot to do, you know, but. But we'd have to figure out what we, exactly need. Are they gonna, are they just gonna take care of the hockey in the winter, and all the summer sports are on, or?
That hip's been rocking the last few weekends, and so is the curly club up there. Lots are just full, huh?
I, I just, we, I, we just need someone to be down there, and, you know, cause who knows what, you know, we have the, uh. The roller derby thing going on a lot of times, and there's, that building could be used a little more in the summertime, and in the fall, you know.
You got the, you got the rec board, but maybe we do need a city employee to coordinate that better with the board, cause they know what's going on there. From our point of view and yours.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be up to the council whether you'd wanna, wanna make a new position and do something like.
Kinda what I was thinking, and that position can work with the board. Might be a lot easier knowing how the place operates, what the capacity is, what they can do.
And if some, something should happen at the hip, I know we're gonna replace the boilers and stuff, and, but there's always something that could happen. So there should be somebody down there that can communicate to, uh, the hockey association that, hey, no, we can't make it this weekend, we gotta.
If you can't dump it all on the board, this way you got a key person down there who can give them a hand, who talks a lot of details, a lot smoother for them.
Yeah, we could definitely look into, into what would be needed down there, what would work the best. And like I said, we need to get straightened out what exactly they'll be doing first. You know, which sports, I mean, you know, it sounds like most of the sports are getting taken care of. I think volleyball is the last one that's kinda hanging out there, but I know the community ed would like to grab that too, and, and have that under their wing.
Is the roller derby, they still?
Yeah, they, yep, you guys okay them for the summer, I guess.
Okay.
Uh, so, once we find out exactly what they'd be doing, then we could come up with a job description. And figure out how many dollars we think needed, whether it's twenty, forty, whatever is needed.
Maybe somebody who's already there. Make a, who could do that position, make a new position, a description, you know, again, most internally. Cause, uh, those people who are familiar with it, the place down there, take the pressure off you and Mark having to deal with that.
Yeah.
Cause we got enough other problems.
That'd be something we'd have to work with the union also on, creating new positions, so, you know, I mean, that's.
Well, it'd be pay adjustment, things like that, if there's more administrative stuff with that.
The, uh. Once they replace Craig. Am I to assume that the new person would be fulfilling the same role that Craig was in the same location?
Yes, yeah. And they'd be taking care of the scheduling of the hip during the night.
And they'd be, they'd be paid out of the rec, joint rec board.
Right, right.
As long as all the communities still wanna be involved in that.
So you're just talking about for when?
When the. Whatever board is gonna reign over Rock Ridge, and I'm assuming Gilbert, Fail, Evlith. Virginia are all gonna be part of this board, you know, be representatives from each one there. Uh, like I said, there, there has to be a, a money's thing going, a charter of something, so that there's a, a little bit of order, and.
Yep.
People are in place.
You're absolutely right.
And I don't think the school is capable of handling that type of situation on their own.
We can't, no, we can't dump that all on them either. It's gotta be a joint effort. That's the only way it works. And like I say, you got off to, I think, a good start, get a long meeting. People talked about a lot of different things, and that's the communication part. Everybody gets a chance to think about what went on there.
When we met with, with Dr. Schmidt, you know, he, we said, you know, he said, we need communication, and that's. Why it took you to step to the plate like he did.
Well, when he was here that day, he said, maybe we gotta step back a little bit and slow down, and he.
Yeah.
It's a, this is huge, when you merge any schools like this. This is huge for an area like this.
I have one question. You get three hundred and sixty-five days notice, correct? We all discussed it. Have we received that yet?
No.
So.
Not, not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
Then our time period is still one year.
I think.
That is.
I think that has to be part of the school board, getting together and deciding what they wanna do.
But our, our year clock hasn't started ticking yet, is what I'm trying to get at.
Well, we're still at, at least a year and a half away.
Okay.
From what I gather. That's all I have.
Anything else, Jim?
No, that's good.
You're, you got a tough job there dealing with that. And it is a volatile subject, you know, the kids and sports.
Hey, there's people in Evlith that haven't gotten, gotten by the Gilbert-Evlith commu- consolidation, much less Virginia and Evlith.
Well, tell me about it. The kids have moved past it. I can tell you that. It's to some of the adults who haven't. Brian, you got anything to add?
No, actually not. John and I attend the same meetings primarily. I need a fine job summarizing EDA, uh, meetings, so. We'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, that's all we had, is, uh, we're working with the airport on the FBO position and airport manager. And then we got another meeting Thursday on that, making some, moving forward on that, getting things in order. We don't have Sky Harbor to deal with anymore. Which I'm, I'm glad, that was just getting to be too much. Too much to, with the, what's required to have be done there, I was, I was glad when Virginia decided to give it back and just focus on what we have there. But other than that, I don't have much. Chief, you got anything to add?
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you, though.
Jerry?
I have nothing else to say, Mayor, thank you.
Alan?
Nothing there.
Alan, is the county gonna put the, like Roosevelt and Douglas out for bids this year?
It's, it's been, uh.
Oh, they has, eh, okay.
Masabi, the two, I think that, that, there's your last.
Oh, okay.
The bid for the city's expenditure for the golden project, so. I can't remember the names off the top of my head, though. That'll, uh, be all summer long.
I think they're gonna be having some meetings too, the state and the county on these, uh, intersections here on the highway, informational meetings. On that too, cause. Cause when they sent that survey out, everybody getting one in the mail, a lot of people were kinda confused. You know, about what to do, cause I got a lot of phone calls about, about that. And didn't quite understand what, what they were looking for, but.
Kind of a confusing.
It was.
Questionnaire, it was.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're calling it. What do they mean by this or that, you know, cause.
Well, one other thing, Bob, um, I attended the mining caucus at, uh, in Virginia.
During the snowstorm?
During the snowstorm, yeah. Uh, we got a, the representatives that were there from Washington, California, Arkansas, and. Uh, Alabama, they were all represented there. Um, got to tour the Hockey Hall of Fame and enjoyed it, came down and took some pictures by the big stick, and they were all really impressed with, uh, the hall and everything, and. Um. We have some support for mining in that group, there's no doubt about it, and, uh, the former interior secretary was there and explained his positions. Uh, he was both, uh, under Bush and, and Trump, and he. Uh, explained a lot of stuff. Uh, there were some, uh, American mining people there. They explained, uh, what they're going through, all the permitting problems that they're having. But if you read in the paper, uh, that, um, US Steel just built a, it's gonna build, broke ground on a new plant down in Arkansas. And it took them six months to get the permits. Six months.
The trouble we have.
We've had sixteen years or better.
Those environmental groups are so well-funded, they don't want anything up here. It's not just the mining. They don't want anything here. That's why they come up with all these goofy permits. They don't understand the science they don't care about.
And half of them have never been up here. That's what gets me.
Well, they say, look what they sent up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it, uh, was very informational, uh. Took a while to get back home, I'll tell you that. It was a spite of social.
Yeah, we were sitting near Airport Commission meeting that night.
Yeah, it was bad.
Look at that window, it was just frickin' terrible. Look at that window, it was just fricking terrible for a couple hours.
No, that snow was good.
White cold, Joe, white cold, white cold.
No, I, I, I mean, you know, everybody's trying to be diplomatic about this. You got to start getting like them. You got to start getting. Real pushy and just plain mean, because no matter what you counter, they come with something else. They got tons of money.
Yep.
I mean, they don't want anything here, period. They're even arguing about a pipeline, and nobody says nothing when they burn a city down. Or cause all kind of environmental damage along that pipeline route. That's, that's the problem here. And you see what happens when you depend on your foreign suppliers, kind of a mess.
That was, that was a key issue at the meeting.
So where was I?
About to adjourn.
You got Ellen, no, it's Steph's turn. Jackie, you got anything to add?
Thanks.
Mitch, you got anything to add?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Anybody from the audience? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting.